To order the meeting for the Los Alamos Unified School District Board of Education and we will start with a roll call.
Mr. Fayet.
Here.
Mrs. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Katulie.
Here.
Mr. Forehand.
Here.
Mrs. Hill.
Here.
Okay, we now have the adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption of the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion, additions or deletions? Okay, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries prior to oral. We are now going into closed session.
Want to just give a second to make sure YouTube gets paused?
Yeah, for sure.
And then I close this order.
Okay. It's okay to start? Okay. My name is Meg Katulie.
I don't want to yell at everybody. So, welcome. We are now back into open session and we're going to start off with some really wonderful things and I'm going to start by handing this off to Dr. Weeswright.
There's nothing better than standing right at my side whilst I speak. Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, our esteemed School Board, Dr. Pulver, McCalliff Community, Friends and Family, Oak Administration. We are super excited tonight to welcome our new Assistant Principal at McCalliff Middle School, Ms. Jen McGuire. So let's give it up. I'm going to share a few words just about our process and about Jen and then we also have a message from Principal Quartermarsh who is at home with his four-day-old baby and was not able to make it this evening. So if you're watching online, Eddie, I hope. Okay. Are we sure, though? Like, the baby's giving him the space? We were really fortunate over the spring to do a robust recruitment and search for the next Assistant Principal at McCalliff Middle School. It was our first time using EdJoin to collect applications. We had over 80 applicants for this position. And from that pool, Ms. McGuire really rose to the top as somebody who really identified with the mission and vision of McCalliff, has embodied what it means to be an Eagle and to be a member of the faculty there. She came to us in 2019 as an education specialist, originally split with Oak, and so she's had experience across the pond, if you will, and recently has been able to be full-time at McCalliff. Jen is really outstanding. Before joining the McCalliff team, she did serve as a resource specialist in Chino Valley Unified School District and as an education specialist in a regionalized program in the Fullerton Joint Union High School District. Her diverse background in education also includes roles such as Applied Behavior Analysis, or ABA Interventionist, Instructional Aid, and Administrative Director of a Montessori school. So she has a wealth of experiences that she brings to this role. She's two and a half weeks in, right? And absolutely thriving. So congratulations to Jen. And now I will share from Mr. Quartermarsh. Mr. Quartermarsh is a very good writer, and so I hope I can do this justice. I practiced once in my office by myself, so we'll see. "Good evening, esteemed School Board members, Superintendent Dr. Pulver, Executive Cabinet, the McCalliff family and community. This is a special opportunity to recognize our Assistant Principal, Mrs. Jen McGuire, and I'm sorry that I cannot be there in person to celebrate. I first want to thank our McCalliff family for their continued support in making McCalliff an incredible experience for students and staff. In particular, I want to acknowledge how lucky I am to work with a dedicated and talented administrative team. Jen, Shelby, and Julie, thank you for your partnership and guidance. I am privileged to introduce Mrs. Jen McGuire as McCalliff's new Assistant Principal. Jen has been a part of the McCalliff family for five years, working as an education specialist for the past four years. Before McCalliff, she served in various educational capacities that prepared her to be a fantastic advocate for students of all abilities and needs. When I began working at McCalliff, I was immediately impressed with Jen. She's a knowledgeable and committed educator with an exceptional ability to communicate and connect with students, staff, and their families. What stood out to me the most was her desire to immerse herself in leadership roles on our campus. From Challenge Success and Tutorial Committee to the Aspiring Leaders Program, Jen has challenged herself and her leadership capabilities. Although it's only been a couple of months, Jen has blossomed into an impactful Assistant Principal. She has seamlessly transitioned into our administrative team, bringing with her unique perspectives, a calm demeanor, a can-do attitude, and timely humor. While I could praise her professional aptitude, what makes me love working with Jen is that she is genuine, confident, supportive, and simply a remarkable person who loves McCalliff. I look forward to working with Jen for many years to come. Jen, I'm sorry I cannot be here tonight, but please know I think the world of you, love you, and honestly believe you are just scratching the surface of your administrative career." And with that...
I'm sweating.
It's your turn.
Testing. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Weeswright. Good evening, President Kuttuli, and esteemed Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Pulver, and Executive Cabinet, and the Low-Sal Community. I am incredibly humbled and honored to have even been considered for this opportunity. I'm choking up. Let alone actually being trusted to serve as McCalliff's next Assistant Principal. As a teacher at McCalliff for the last four years, I got to know the culture really well, and I learned what it means to be a part of that community. And I'm so lucky to say that I get to work alongside people I now consider my family. I don't know how my husband would feel about this, but for the past week in my behavior chats, I've been telling all of the McCalliff students that they are my children, because I don't have children yet. And it's true. I care for them deeply. I want to keep them safe. I want the best for them. So this opportunity to serve as their Assistant Principal is really a dream come true. This district has given me so many opportunities, excuse me, so many opportunities to learn and grow as an educator, a leader, and generally a human being. I can't think of a better place to begin my journey in leadership, among some of the most inspiring and passionate leaders I've had the privilege to learn from, one of whom I so luckily get to work alongside this year and hopefully many years to come, Mr. Eddie Quartermarsh. He has been the definition of a true leader in the way he empowers and uplifts all those around him, including me. His passion and dedication are always evidenced in the way that he serves our students. Thank you, Eddie. I'm grateful for your guidance, your candor, and your trust. And I told him that since he's not here tonight, the statement better be really good, and it was really good, so. I also want to acknowledge my McCalliff team, Shelby Olmstead, Julie Foote, Mary McCulloch, and all of the office staff who have so graciously welcomed me into the office in this new role, answering all of my questions, and meanwhile, I can't answer any of theirs. To the McCalliff teachers, you have seen me through several pivotal moments in my life, including this one. And through each season, I have felt your endless love and support. So thank you. Thank you to Dr. Weeswright for hiring me so many years ago, and for your mentorship and your inspiration as a leader. I also want to thank Oak's Assistant Principal, Steven Segura, and the entire Oak admin team for supporting me through this transition with knowledge and kindness and patience. I could not have started this school year without their help and support. Finally, thank you to my husband, Brendan, for being my rock and my light throughout this process and throughout everything. I also wanted to thank my mom, Jeannie, and my dad, James. I'm so grateful that I get to share this experience with them tonight, and I hope that I make them proud. Thank you.
Jen, I'm going to speak first because frequently the other board members always say what I want to say, so I'm going to go first. I don't have to worry about it. First of all, that was so well-spoken and enjoyable, very warm and encompassing and articulate. So I think you're going to knock it out of the park at McCalliff, so I'm very happy about that. And I also really want to thank you for jumping in knee-deep, both feet, with Eddie having a baby four days old. So, you know, and I have no qualms that McCalliff is out without a leader. I know that you will be there and you'll do a great job. So thank you so much for stepping up to that. Okay, now, who else would like to say something? Marla?
Congratulations, Jen. We're all very, so excited that you're here. And I have to say, over the last few days since school started, I've had a number of opportunities to be on campus. And every single time, this is not a lie, you were jetting by constantly, doing your classroom talks, or out in the quad, stopping kids with their cell phones and telling them to put them away. So thank you very much. But every single time with anyone I talked with, everyone of your McCalliff family said, "We're so glad she's doing this and she's off to a fabulous start and it's going to be a great year." And they're attributing that to you. So we wish you all the best. It's a challenging job, and you are definitely up to the challenge. You were fabulous in your interview, so congratulations.
I think you hit it, Meg, when you said, "Four days into the first week of school, she is now the principal taking over." So thank you for being there for all those kids.
You know, I don't know who you believe. You know, four days. Ryan says two weeks, and Eddie says two months. I don't know if y'all caught that. So I'm not sure exactly what it is, but I think what Eddie's really saying is he felt like you were a partner as soon as you were selected by the site. You know, Jen, you're such a positive force, a student advocate. And, you know, McCalliff has a great history of, and I'm the beneficiary of it as well, of hiring assistant principals who also taught at that school. And I think it really keeps strong roots to the families, to the staff, and to the community. And so it speaks volumes to see so many here. I also really want to thank Oak, that we have two middle schools, and when we have a family here, to see the two middle schools really kind of coming together to support their own is also pretty special and unique. So welcome aboard. You've already been part of our team, but it's just in a different role. And yeah, many, many seasons. Let's go.
Okay, we are now going to take a very short recess to take pictures.
For Jen and with your families, do a quick picture first.
I'd like to call us back into open session, and we're continuing with the workshop part of our meeting. And Mrs. Shinour, will you please introduce CJ, who we all know and laugh?
Happy to. Thank you, Madam President. It gives me great honor to introduce Mr. CJ Nolan, who has been extremely busy all summer with lots of facility projects. So he's going to provide the Board with an update on what has happened and what's about to happen. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, honorable members of the Board. Thank you, guys, for being here this afternoon to go over some of our projects that we have completed and are still working on from this summer. So first thing that I usually like to start with is our big project, the new gymnasium. I always like to lead with the schedule. As you can see, we are approaching the, almost near the halfway point for the gymnasium. Currently, we're at that green line, right towards the end of the form and erect, the tilt-up walls. I know a couple of you were able to join us for the setting of the tilt-up walls. And we are currently now fabricating our structural steel that will be making up the roof line of the building. So currently, all of the walls are up. And I wanted to share some, a little video with you. It kind of shows an overhead shot of the gymnasium, and you can see those square panels below. Those are actually the concrete wall panels that are formed. And then they cure for about seven days, and then we lift, then they get lifted into place. With those panels, we had to do two separate lifts. You can see the standing walls. Those were in the place of the walls that are being formed in this video. And then, once they were set, we started forming the next set of walls. And following the setting of those walls, if you were with us on those walks, I was mentioning these stitch columns, which you can see on the right-hand side. Now, those are the columns of concrete that have rebar, reinforcing bar, coming out of, that really bind those walls together and make the building structurally sound. You can see on the left-hand side, that is actually the day they were pouring, that second set of concrete wall panels. But as of now, all the wall panels are up, and I believe we just had our last pour for the stitch columns today. So we'll be removing those stitch column forms as well over the next probably two weeks, because we have to let it cure a little bit.
CJ?
Yeah.
I don't know why I didn't ask this before. How do they stand up if they're not stitched together?
So they have those, on the backside, you see the, it's like an iron, like a little stand, like on a, almost like an industrial picture frame. We actually have bolt embed plates into the concrete foundation that hold it up in place before the stitch columns are there. And it really locks it in. It also sets into rebar itself, so there is, there is a grounding at the bottom of the wall as well.
Great. Thank you. Okay. I'm pretty sure this is, I'm going to say a stupid question, but I don't believe there ever is a stupid question. So this is a reassuring question. I see all the rebar on the corner sections, and I think that is actually really... I see all the rebar on the corner sections, and I think that is actually a really brilliant thing to do as far as construction is concerned, but please tell me that the walls have rebar in it, too.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, I kept thinking that they must, and there wouldn't be any reason for you to mention it, but I thought if I don't say something, I'll feel like an idiot 10 years from now, so.
Yeah, so actually, the way the stitch columns work is each one of those panels has rebar coming out of the perimeter of it. And the stitch column really stitches the rebar from each panel together.
Yeah, for sure.
That is, that is what holds it. And it also allows it to have some plain seismic event as well. So that, that is the essential purpose of the stitch column. We also, for those wall panels, they're much higher PSI concrete, so it's a, it hardens much faster, and it is a much harder concrete as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, moving on. You can also see this one in the video a little bit, too. The synthetic turf has been replaced at the high school. Overall, the complete, the synthetic turf has been replaced with some minor outside edges as well. One component of this project is we were trying to resurface the track at the same time because we were really wanting it to look all new at the same time. We did run into a material delay with the polymer that is part of the surface of the track. So we are working with our vendor to secure that material. They still have not secured it as of yet, but they're expecting it this week. Although, you tend to hear that. But they, they seem more confident that this is the week they will receive it. Once we do have a confirmation from our vendor that they have received it, we will be coordinating with the site to really work on, when is the best timeframe to do work like this? So essentially, right now, the track is the same track as it was last year. When they come in to resurface the track, what they will be doing is taking up, off that top layer and applying a new rubberized polymer layer on top of it, which will have the newer colors and everything that was selected last fall. So essentially, our vendor, because of this delay, has agreed to work weekends and after hours to complete this work. Right now, with their schedule, it looks like we would need four days of downtime for the track. Ideally, when we start working with the site to identify when that would be, we'd be doing a Friday, Monday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Although, right now, with some of our football games and other events, we want to work around all of that.
When you review the track, would that be that whole area, like the football field, everything being off limits, or would they be able to?
So for that four-day period, everything would be off limits. There is some prep work and some follow-up work, where the whole process will take about 10 days, but we need four days of no one on the, because if we allow them to use the field, there's a high chance that a ball or something will land on the track, and it needs about four days to really cure and set. All right, another monster project we had this summer was all of our classroom renovations. Really, the, the large portion of this project was in the 600s building. So on the picture on the left-hand side, you can see one of our finished classrooms, which essentially has all, all upgraded finishes, including tack wall, carpet, ceiling tiles. We also upgraded some projectors and moved some projectors and speakers. We've replaced the roof of the 600s building. And in our art classrooms, as I go through, through the slides, we, we applied polished concrete for those floors. The polished concrete is a surface that is just very durable, easy to clean, and it's really made for art rooms. That's really where you see it, that and Costco.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, because we've had, we've had carpet over our, carpet over our concrete for so long, and it was never really designed to be a finish, it does look a little bit more industrial, but it'll be a great surface for our art classrooms as moving forward. I also wanted to highlight that, in addition to our typical classroom renovations, this summer I had several unique spaces, including art show and gallery room, our ceramics room, our computer labs, and our robotics and engineering workshops. So this is actually the art show and gallery room. It's a specialized room that we worked with the site to set up to really meet their needs, where we have, they're able to showcase their art on a, on a more long-term basis. We also have a actual gallery room where we relocated some of the TVs, and we repaired the lighting that was in there. So it is all one room, but we have like one show gallery room as well. And on the other, opposite side, we also have a curtain track that is able to kind of hide some of our art supplies. Like if you're having an art show, and you're having people come, you will be able to close that curtain, curtain, and really conceal like all the supplies that are used on a daily basis. Our 750s classroom renovations, these were, these classrooms were really in dire need of reservation, renovations. One of the things we were trying to do with these classrooms was really reorient the room to maximize our teaching wall space. So you can see in this room, it's been reoriented where we have three whiteboards on the opposite, on the wall furthest away from the picture, a 12-foot whiteboard in the middle with two eight-foot whiteboards on either side. We also, this is a picture of one of our computer labs, where we have the cable, cables for data and power lined through the center of the room and also on the walls of the room. So this is, this picture is actually from the teacher's station desk, where they are able to have a, a spot that they can work from their desk and teach in the front of the room, and really oversee that whole, whole classroom. And in addition, one of the existing, existing computer labs in the 750s building, we repurposed into a lab space for robotics, and their hydrogen cars and all of our other STEM working lab groups. So what we really needed was a larger space for these groups. We also went with the polished concrete floors in here as well. This is just, like I said, a more durable floor that will be able to really withstand the wear and tear that some of our STEM lab working groups will put on it. Our roof replacements, it's hard to notice from the ground, but we did replace the roofs of our PAC 800, 600s, and 150s building. That leaves us with the only buildings that, with roofs that have not been replaced, being the 500s, the existing gymnasium, and the portable classrooms. While we are replacing these roofs, a lot of times we uncover some of our corroded or more aged equipment or conduits or infrastructure. One of the, one of the issues that we faced this summer was replacing the roofs. We exposed quite a bit of our fire alarm and electrical conduits that have corroded and had to be repaired. So we're actually been spending the last week or so making those repairs and getting all of that taken care of now that the roofs are done. Moving on to the Performing Arts Center, so the stage floor has been replaced and refinished. And it was a little hard to get a good picture of the stage floor because it's just a big black floor. But this is the stage floor in progress, and we were able to get the finished picture right here on the right-hand side as well. In addition to the stage floor, we've identified additional improvements from working with our PAC staff, and we're working on finalizing some of those improvements at an upcoming meeting, hopefully next week. Those remaining improvements, that we've kind of separated them on the right-hand side between items that we anticipate not requiring DSA approval and items that will require DSA approval. Those include the new dimmable house lights over the seating area, new stage lighting, and a new DMX data distribution for sound, our upgraded power circuitry over the stage, and replacement of overstage work lights. So now, those are all items that we feel like we can get started on right away as soon as we get a confirmation from our PAC work user groups. However, we will be wanting to schedule a pre-application meeting with DSA just to confirm that these upgrades don't trigger DSA, because this is such an old building, and while we are trying to move forward with projects that will require DSA approval, we really want to make sure that if it does require DSA approval, that we are packaging all of that up together in one bid package. The items that we are looking at that would require DSA approval include room acoustics. Now, those are like the wall treatments, the ceiling treatments, like, so the curtains that you may see intermittently on the wall, or the ceiling tiles, not quite ceiling tiles, ceiling treatments. Sometimes they are, they look like a little bit of like a pyramid, so they're really to reflect that, the acoustics of the room and improve the acoustics of the room. Those were some of the primary upgrades that our acoustical engineers suggested after they studied the sound for the space. The next improvement we have is the motorized stage with the lighting rigging over the audience. This will require structural engineering and will require DSA. Our new and upgraded AV equipment, so specifically the speakers, a lot of those speakers for PAC building can be quite large, and mounting those would require DSA approval. One that is in a little bit of a gray area, but we want to check with DSA, is the new or refurbished seating for the PAC. Now, a lot of times with DSA, if you're just replacing like for like, you don't have to necessarily get approval, but seating is a very access-heavy item. So it's one thing we just want to clear with them before we get started on that. And definitely additional restrooms at the exterior wings of the PAC. That one will 100% have to go through DSA. So if you remember from previous presentations, we were looking at doing restrooms in those exterior courtyards on the left and right-hand side of the PAC, and that is something we'll be looking to move forward with as well.
CJ, remind me, please, are those going to be connected to the building or more like a portable?
They, so we have several options. They will be connected to the building in the sense that they will be right next to the building. So it's like building in addition, essentially. Now, the, we have existing walkways out from the front of the PAC, in front of the stage, that go to each of those courtyards. And what we're going to want to work with our architect when we bring one onboard is, how do we have a walkway or corridor, how is that journey to the restroom from the PAC? So that's something we're going to really have to work with our architect and refine. I am not, I'm not able to really say what our restrictions are with DSA. There's a lot, with a building this older, a lot of things that can significantly, can significantly increase the cost. So we really want to work with our architect to find the, the best, most cost-effective way of doing that. No problem. And another project that we've been talking about, and we did actually bid out this summer, are the additional staff restrooms at the STEM building. Just to remind everybody, this project is to modify two storage closets, one on the second floor and one on the third floor, to create two additional single occupancy staff restrooms located on the second and third floors in those PLC teacher spaces. In addition, this project was, will also be adjusting the door location for the single occupancy restroom, restroom located near the STEM building lobby. When we bid this project out this summer, the bid came out relatively high, in my opinion, at $530,000. We've reviewed this cost with our contractor to really identify what were the expensive areas, was there any fat that we could trim out of this project? One of the things that was identified was really the timing of the project and the work hours that would be available to them to get it done. So we've internally developed a plan to begin this work over a winter break, where we would be able to accomplish all of the disruptive work and then continue with finishes during the school year. Because again, these storage closets are in the PLC rooms, and they actually are not adjacent to any classrooms. So providing we're able to get all the disruptive work to occur over winter break, the finished work should be non-disruptive to the campus. With that being said, we will be rebidding this project to get more competitive pricing. On the last price, last bid that we received, we did only receive one bid. And for me, that always makes me a little bit uneasy because you don't know if you're getting the best price. So we will be rebidding this project, and we're also going to be including that timeline I just shared for the work. In addition to that, we are going to be making the first-floor door relocation a bid alternate so that we can really separate that cost out from the rest. In terms of a need and a want, the two staff restrooms are more of a need, where, while the relocation of the door is highly wanted, it's just not quite at that same priority as the other two restrooms. So we are actively working to bid that out. The bids are scheduled to be advertised next week, and we anticipate having the contract presented at the October board meeting. So that would provide us just enough time to award that contract, order materials, and get it going for winter break. What's next, an additional facilities project?
Never-ending.
So really, the projects that we have contracted, ready to go, are on the left-hand side. These are the Oak Middle School Gymnasium floor replacement and the McGaw Elementary School Gymnasium clear-story window and roof replacement. Both of these projects are a little different, where we have to work with our city partners to really accomplish, accomplish these projects. So for the Oak Middle School Gymnasium floor replacement, they currently have a club that is using those, the gymnasium until about mid-September. So that's really when we're trying to begin, begin and start that work. For the McGaw clear-story window and roof replacement, on this evening's board agenda, we have the material, the roofing material for approval. And once we get that material, it's about a four-weekly time before our contractor will be able to begin. Also, with the McGaw Gymnasium roof replacement and clear-story window, there's quite a bit of coordination. We've had meetings with the City of Seal Beach, just because logistically, the gymnasium is in a really difficult location to perform work. The pool stays active, which is on one side. On the other side is our student lunch area. And really finding the lay-down area for equipment, how are we going to load things safely onto the roof, and all of that has been a little bit of a logistical spider web, if you might. But I think from working with the City of Seal Beach and working with our contractor, we've already had our pre-construction meeting for this project. I think we've found some solutions that are going to be able to make it possible. The other projects that I may have previously mentioned in this presentation include the track resurfacing, the PAC upgrades and improvements, the remaining classroom renovations. Now, that is really the, it includes the PAC, but it's those band classrooms, those ancillary spaces that are left on, on the campus. So in the PAC building, there are several band classrooms, black box, other spaces that haven't, haven't had been renovated like our other classrooms have. So we'll be taking a look at all of those, in addition to these STEM staff restrooms that I just talked about. And then we have our deferred maintenance project, which is the Hopkinson Elementary School asphalt replacement. So if you remember about a year, a year ago, we re-slurried, we re-slurried Hopkinson's asphalt, hoping to extend the lifespan of it for another two to three years. It's looking like this summer, we're going to either need to replace it or take some type of corrective action. So with that project, it's something that we need to really jump onboard with an architect now so that we're able to get through the DSA process prior to next summer. And lastly, we have our McGaw Elementary School PTA-funded new playground. So this is a project we already have contracted with an architect, and we've really spent the last couple months in summer to refine the budget and the scope for this project so it fits within the PTA's budget. So I'm hoping to be able to have this contract for board approval at the next board meeting as well.
CJ, where is it, is on the PTA-funded new playground at McGaw, is it a new playground or is it on a, replacing one? And if it's, where is it located on the campus? It's a big campus, but where is it?
Right, those are, those are really good questions.
Yeah.
So with our, with our playgrounds, you may remember when we were replacing our previous playgrounds, we were using the existing footprint. So that would make it not require DSA approval because we did not change the access to those playgrounds. With, this will be a new playground in addition to the existing playgrounds, which will require DSA approval, which is why we have an architect onboard and we're making all those design, meeting all those design requirements. This, this new playground will be going This, this new playground will be going right next to the, there's like a bank of swings, I forget what street it is on the.
Oh, Marlin?
Mm-hmm, correct. There's a, it'll be going right adjacent to that.
They're close to the Kinder Ring, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, that is Marlin, okay.
So one of the DSA upgrades that we're proactively, think, pretty sure that they will be requiring of us is an accessible path all the way down that way. There isn't really a sidewalk that goes along the side, goes along the baseball field and the playgrounds. So that's one thing that, as we were working with the PTA, we wanted to make sure that we had those DSA requirements budgeted as well. So.
Because the PTA, this is not a playground we're funding. All schools have three. So they're even having to pay the DSA cost, all the costs that we would, the architects, et cetera. So PTA really is funding the totality of this. Because it's an additional, it's not a replacement. We've replaced all of our playgrounds.
Well, that's what, that's why I asked. I thought, where is it, and then where is it going? But yeah, all I can say is that I'm sure the community at McGaw really appreciates how expensive school construction is now, and how many hoops you have to jump through before you can actually do a project.
It is definitely a learning process.
And, and thank you to the McGaw PTA. I bet Project Seek's helping, too.
Yeah. And why did they, why was this such a passionate thing for them to pursue?
I don't know if I know a why, other than that the PTA has been, it's been a desire of theirs to create more play spaces for, for kids. They've had resources for the last couple of years that I think that they've been pooling together. And this is where the PTA really thought this would be a great use of parent-fund raised dollars to support kids for, not only today, but for, for the future as well.
Great, thank you.
Just to add, I do know the McGaw PTA has been working really to maximize those dollars. So as we've been going through, explaining the DSA process and what, what projects would be able to kind of maximize those while making the soft costs low, this was on the higher end. Where like some other things were looked at, like lunch shelters, and that would require like fire spring, they would, the cost would increase much more significantly than a playground.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Davidson?
Just a quick one, first of all. I can't even comprehend how you're juggling so many different projects. A little tiny bit of remodeling we've had done in our house from time to time takes months. But thank you so much. And also, I just want to thank you, because on top of all of this, you're very responsive when the community asks for things. Or like the lights for the, for the Friday night lights, football and soccer, and soccer at McCullough. You got that in, the families are happy. There was, I think, a wash station. In the midst of all that you're doing, you're still responsive, very quickly responsive to the needs of the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something?
I do. And I like the way you always take the voice of the people that are going to occupy and work there, especially the teaching staff. They know what's great in their classroom, so thank you.
And I want to thank you for making the new gym taller than the old gym, being a volleyball booster and watching kids kill themselves trying to get a ball that hits the roof and then goes into the stands. So it will still happen.
No student has died doing that, just FYI.
Yeah, so, yeah. So I appreciate that. Everybody in our, and my personal family's very excited because of the walls are so high.
Awesome.
Mrs.?
Mrs. Guttuli, and I just want to say, just a funny thing. I just know that you do such a great job on managing all of our subs, all of our contractors. And so, early one Sunday morning, I had my three grandchildren getting donuts across the street. And I look over, and they're, and it was, this was early. Kids get up early, you should know that by now.
And then they don't go to bed at night.
Yeah. And I look across the street, and there is a man on the roof. And I'm like, there is a man on the roof of our building. And then I see stuff kind of being moved. And I'm like, CJ's got them working first thing Sunday morning. So I just appreciate, I know that it's hurried up because we want it done before school starts, and how important that is. Thank you.
Yep, and with our, with our wider-scale projects, like our renovations and our roof replacements, a lot of our summers do get shorter and shorter. So, and by the time our teaching staff does return, we do take a couple of weeks really refining and getting those last-minute things in there.
Okay, yeah, great job. Yeah, thank you. Okay, I think we are good. Are there any comment cards for closed session? Yay. Okay, we are now going to go into closed session, and we will return at 6:00 PM.